Are we ready? Morning, everyone. This is the special meeting of the Board of Directors of the Coast to Mesa Sanitary District for Red Letter Day, April fifteenth. It's ironic that we're talking about the budget on tax day.
They they extended it.
Only if you live in L.A. County. Some of us had to extend it. Just a clarification on the agenda. There's a note that I am attending this meeting remotely. I think that was just a leftover from the board meeting agenda. I'm actually here live, so you're lucky to have me here. Roll call, Madam Clerk. We had a roll call, please.
Director Nicole Wiltshire.
Here.
Vice Secretary Armin Schaefer.
Here.
Secretary Arthur Perry.
Here.
Vice President Robert Ooten.
Here.
President Mike Schaefer.
Here.
Director, I'm sorry, President Schaefer, just for the record, Director Wiltshire is is participating online because she's not feeling well today. So she, that's why she's at home, and but she is participating from home because she's not well.
Well, we hope you feel better. Okay, public comments. Anyone from the public wishing to speak on an item within our jurisdiction, but not on the agenda? Seeing no one, we will move right to item C, the discussion of the preliminary biennial budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven. And I'm assuming Caitlin, you'll be taking the lead on this.
Yes, I am. Good morning, Mr. President and members of the board. Before you today are the proposed preliminary budgets for fiscal years two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, and two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven. Staff have been working on these budgets since January. Throughout this process, departments held multiple meetings to ensure that these budgets are balanced. So what is a balanced budget? A balanced budget simply means that our projected revenue match or exceed our projected expenses. In another word, we're not spending more than what we're bringing in. The proposed budgets are outlined in Attachment A for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, and Attachment B for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven. For fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, the total proposed budget is seventeen million four hundred forty-six thousand three hundred. As you can see here on this slide, the total budget. For fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven, the for the proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven is seventeen million eight hundred twenty-six thousand eight hundred. And you can see that right here. So today we'll begin with an overview of the revenue projections for both fiscal years. These projections set the foundation for how we will fund our operations programs and capital improvement projects. Then we'll look at expenses. We'll look at these year by year, beginning with fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, then fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven. Under expenses, we have salaries and benefits, followed by operations and maintenance. Next, we'll discuss programs, capital improvement projects, and transfer for both fiscal years. Details of today's presentation are in the written staff report and also the PDF attachments A and B. Okay, so let's begin with revenue for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six. Property tax, you can see here the first, the first line, property tax. Property taxes are recorded in the general fund and are considered as non-restricted revenue. Historically, these property tax revenues were transferred to the solid waste fund to stabilize rates. For the upcoming fiscal years, the projected revenue budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six is three hundred ninety-two thousand three hundred. See here, this is general fund. We're talking about fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, property tax. And for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven, it is four hundred thousand dollar. That's down here, general fund, property taxes line. Toward the
What question should we go where you want us to wait?
I'll I'll pause in between and I'll I'll accept questions. Yeah, sure.
Are you still on revenues right now?
Yes. So we're we're just starting on revenue. I'm talking about fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six and also twenty-six, twenty-seven. And we're starting with property taxes under general fund. It's Attachment A and B, page one. The very first section. Toward the end of this presentation, I will discuss about the use of property tax revenues under the transfer section. Any questions on property taxes? Solid waste, annual charge revenues are, I'm sorry. The next one is annual charge. The district collects solid waste and wastewater fees through the annual property tax assessment and records these revenues under an account that we created called annual charges. The, these annual charges revenue are recorded separately for solid waste and wastewater. So earlier, we talk about property tax. It's under general fund. And then we have solid waste fund. Right next to it is wastewater fund. So for annual charge for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, the revenue projected to be eight million fifty thousand. And for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven, the annual charge for solid waste fund is eight million six hundred twenty thousand, which represent a seven percent increase between the two fiscal years. This reflects rate increases approved by the board. Fiscal years two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-six, twenty-seven represent the second and the third years of the five years rate increase plan. And then next, we'll talk about annual charge revenues for wastewater fund. For fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, the revenue projected to be seven million let me go back one step. Seven million six hundred ninety-six thousand wastewater annual charge revenue. For fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven wastewater annual charge revenue is estimated to be seven million seven hundred and two thousand. These totals are calculated by multiplying the number of active account plus a projected point zero eight percent growth by the approved rate. The Board of Directors approved a five-year rate increase plan that went into effective at the beginning of the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. The plan included rate increases for the first two fiscal years, followed by stable rates for the remaining three years. Wastewater rates will remain unchanged for the next two fiscal years, which represent the fourth and the fifth years of the plan.
Caitlin, so the seventeen percent is it's balanced between those are the residential and non-residential changes? Because some of them, some of them, you know, the zero percent in twenty-four, twenty-five. Some of them have no change and some of them do. So it just, it it's seventeen, it's whatever the number is. It's balanced between all those others, seven or eight.
Yes. So for the first two years, it's seventeen percent increase. That's revenue adjustment, the revenue increase. But as far as the rate, it's it's mixed between commercial and residential that creates the seventeen percent revenue adjustment. Yes. So under revenue, we also have additional container charge. That's the third line of revenue here. This account is to record revenue from solid waste customer who requests additional container for ten dollar per container per month. CRNR will invoice customers directly for this charge and will retain twenty percent of the revenue collected.
Backing up the property taxes and then annual charge. Annual charge is still collected via property tax.
Yes.
Over the, you know, over the years, we've talked about that property tax line is kind of a I don't want to say a bonus fund, but it's money we collect separately from the the charges that people pay.
Yes, so that's why it's unrestricted. It's under general fund. Yes.
Property taxes unrestricted, whereas the annual charge is restricted to the two funds.
Correct. So that's why you see here, there's a separate fund here. General fund, solid waste, wastewater.
When when we first got that, it was around a hundred thousand. Now it's up to three hundred thousand.
It's been around three hundred thousand.
I mean, I've talked about it some years ago, thirty years ago.
Yeah.
Some of them weren't even that, around thirty. And we were kind of surprised that we got it, but that was, give us flexibility.
Any other questions? Okay, and next line under revenue is investment earnings. Investment earnings are the income that the district earns from interest and dividends on its investments. The investment earnings are allocated to the solid waste, wastewater, asset replacement, asset management, and facility revolving funds. And followed by contribution revenues. As part of the contract with CR, with the district, CRNR provides annual support for several programs, including public education anti-s scavenging effort and battery recycling program.
What does that total right now that we get? About ten thousand or more?
Thirty-seven thousand eight hundred, around. I'm projecting that for the next two fiscal year because this year we received around thirty-seven thousand.
The item, the third item down is reimbursement for hiring Christmas trees. CRNR. There, there is.
Oh, I'm, I will, that, this non-operating revenue is the explanation for this last line item there. So I will get there soon. Right now, I am on contribution. So next is the charges for services revenue. These are fees collected from resident of newly developed properties who aren't yet included on the assess, annual assessment. These residents pay a prorated fee for solid waste and wastewater services until they are placed on the annual assessment for the following fiscal year. This account also includes revenues from unincorporated areas, a few properties in Newport Beach, and a, and one condo association. For these customers, staff sends invoices directly instead of placing them on the annual property tax assessment. For the district, the district refire, requires homeowner and contractor to obtain permit and a, a permit and inspection for any construction or repair involving the sewer system. These fees are collected. The the fees collected from the permit and inspections revenue here are to help recover the cost of staff time, review plans, and inspection services. Okay?
Those numbers, the last, the bottom two numbers are different from the budget report that I, that I'm looking at, but.
So I'll get right, right now, we'll get there. So the last line item here under revenue is the other non-operating revenues. And this is kind of a catch-all of all the non-operating revenues, so that it's it's involved. It has a lot of different sources in here, so that's why I I list it out here. So other non-operating, operating revenues included for the solid waste fund is two hundred and five thousand one hundred dollars. Waste for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, under wastewater, staff's projecting a hundred eighty-two thousand one hundred. And for the total of the two funds is three hundred and eighty-seven, two hundred. So what's included in, in this non-operating revenue, it's the district share of OC waste recycling imports revenue from the regional waste disposal agreement. Also, we, in this year, the cybersecurity grant that we'll be receiving. Also, CRNR will reimburse for Christmas tree pickup if we hire a third party toward the end of the year. And then
Did we, we haven't confirmed that, have we? They're gonna, we're gonna charge them for that service?
So the
We were gonna pick up that fee.
The twenty-twenty-three First Amendment to the agreement does authorize the district to hire a third party and then bill DRNR for the service?
No, but we discussed that at the, one of the meetings, last meeting, that we know, we don't, we think that's unfair. We thought the district should pick up that fee. Is that correct, Mike?
Exactly. It was, I didn't, I didn't receive full direction. I had one board member express that, but I didn't get the whole board to tell me that. So I mean, we can bring that back on on the agenda so I get full direction from the board. I can bring it on a future agenda item.
Yeah, that's, that's the way to do it, because we didn't agree on that. We brought that up as just possession. So we shouldn't include that until we make a final decision.
Well, what does the contract say?
The contract says that we can hire a third party and bill CRNR to cover the cost. And then also, we'll get reimbursement from CRNR for the community survey as well as liquidated damages that we're projecting. And under this one hundred and eighty-two thousand one hundred, under the wastewater fund, that's include the five percent share of Orange County sanitation fee collection, collections.
Can you go over that again from the start?
For the, the wastewater.
No, go ahead. I maybe I missed a term. Go ahead and tell me what you just said.
So in permits, permits department, they review plan. And let's say if you add an additional bedroom or two or three, going from a three-bedroom to a five-bedroom, then we're, CMSD, we're collecting on behalf of OCSD, we're collecting their capacity fee for them. And we'll submit that fee, their, their cost to them, and we keep five percent of it for the admin costs.
Looking forward a little bit, and I, we don't need to include it in this budget, but if we eventually get to a point where under maybe thirteen eighty or whatever it is, thirteen eighty-three, we're gonna start collecting penalties. If if and when we ever get to that point, where will you, where will you show that under revenues? Will that come under fees or?
I, I would add that under non-operating revenue.
Non-operating? Is there any way we can, I, I don't know how impact, impactful it's gonna be, whether it's, we're gonna have a, we don't know, right? What what that impact is gonna be? Is it possible we could have a separate line item?
Sure, sure.
You know, just, maybe I'm overblowing this, but that's something that I think we need to keep track of separately. Do you think that's gonna come into effect, Scott, this next fiscal year? No. I don't think so either. I don't think it'll be for three to five years, to be honest with you.
Well, nobody has the, no community has the guts to make those charges.
Right now, you're right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So the the three eighty-seven is the sum of several of those items up above.
So it's just the non-operating revenue from solid waste fund, the two oh five one hundred, plus one eighty-two one hundred from the wastewater fund in the non-operating.
But several of those items.
Yes, so just straight across. And then this is adopt, the adopted budget. The last, the second to last column here is the adopted budget current fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, just there so that you can see the numbers from last year or this current year and what we're proposing. And you can see that fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven were for non-operating revenue. It's less, a lot less than the first budget year. It's because in this years, there won't be any grant or the reimbursement from CRNR for the community survey. Okay, so now let's talk about revenue. Any more questions about expenses? We'll talk about expenses now. Any questions on revenues?
No. With, with the way things are going federally right now, and the uncertainty with the market and the uncertainty with federal grants and fed up. I'm sure you guys are flexible and you're, you keep track of that. I don't think we're gonna see a huge effect this year negatively. But next, going into next year, there's really no guarantees. Hopefully the money you know, rebounds, sure will, you know, always. But you guys are keeping pretty good track of that, I'm sure that, and what effect it could have ultimately on our budget, right?
Yes, and our bread and butter are the, the fees, the cert, the solid waste and wastewater services fee that we're charging. We're not relying heavily on, on, on.
We don't, we don't get a lot of revenue from the federal government, if any, do we?
No, just grants.
Really our investment impacts.
Yes, yes. And if grants that we're planning to apply here for the health enforcement and the cybersecurity.
How about the health, yeah, we did ask for some federal money on that, right?
We're, we're planning.
I knew you were planning it. We'll see.
And it's being twenty thirty.
Thanks.
So when reviewing expenses for salaries and benefits or operation and maintenance section, you'll see that there are two section to it. So if you look at Attachment A, that's fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, the first page, the section after revenue, it's salaries and benefits. And you see administrative section. And then if you go down, there's also salaries and benefits for wastewater maintenance. So the difference between the two is the administrative, that's for salaries and benefits, cost for HQ personnel.
Are you basing that on a three-point-one?
Yes, well, there's
We haven't, we haven't decided that yet, have we?
Not yet. I'm, that's included in this budget for the board to
Because you have three different options, I saw. Started at one percent.
Three, we, we chose three-point-one because that is the consumer price index from LA, Orange County, February two.
Well, it's because it's a jump from to thirteen percent. And I, I thought, because I, I saw it was one, three different options that we could choose. One percent, two percent, three percent. Is that correct?
So you're talking of what you're referring to, I believe, it's the service loyalty pay. That's one of the benefits that we're, we're proposing. So that's, that's part of what's the thirteen, the eleven percent increase. The overall is the eleven percent increase.
Because the service loyalty is a private practice process. And I don't think any public agencies call it service loyalty. I think what public agencies call it is longevity. So I think that's an incorrect term. Service loyalty is not appropriate for, for me.
Fine, it's just a name change. We can change whatever you want. It's fine. It's, you know, we, we, when we're back on what to call it, I think we did did a survey on jurisdiction, what they call it. Everyone calls it differently, but if whatever's your comfort level, you want to call longevity, we'll call it longevity. Not a problem.
Well, I think, I think that's more appropriate for what the public and or the private. The private, the private ones give service loyalty. Bonus, one-time bonuses, and this is a one-time bonus. It doesn't affect the individual's pay, so.
Well, and I think the reason that we didn't, we kind of wanted to stay away from the title longevity pay is because that's typically pensionable. And what we are proposing does not affect an employee's pension. So we just were coming up with other terms. Other agencies have various names for it.
And I also want to add to that. We'll discuss more in detail when we get to that section. But another issue that I think was calling it longevity is, let's say if you hire someone new, you replace me. You hire someone new and you, because of their experience, and you hire them at the max salary range. And then next year, they're at the max already and they did exceptional. So then now their annual merit, you're gonna give, you can't give them another five percent merit because they're at their max. So they're only here one year and you're giving them longevity pay. One year being with the district is not really longevity.
Yeah, so it's actually a five-year process. You have to, any one person has to wait five years in order to get that.
Yeah, so that's, that's part of what the requirements for it, that we add in the benefit. But let me, let me start with salaries and the benefits for HQ personnel. You see, there's a split between solid waste fund and wastewater fund. And later, the second part is the salary and benefits for wastewater maintenance. That's personnel for the field staff. That's a hundred percent solid waste. Okay?
The new position, maybe you, maybe you've gotten there. I think it's appropriate that we, we have, we potentially hire a new person. Let's see.
So the
But, but I'm, 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 I'm finally focusing. The number one complaint that I get is the difficulty is the difficulty of dealing with CRNR. And then, so what I would like that person to do is, and, and if you listen to our, if I call into Coach Mason's sanitary district, uh, and I hit number one, that refers me straight to CRNR. CRNR is doing a horrible job of, of taking care of our customers from their customer perspective potential. And so what I would like to see is if that person, if we choose to hire that person, that, that not, that that be one of their, 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 um, that they be responsive, responsive and responsible to the customers. Because see, I, I, CRNR is disastrous. They go through a lot of customer service people and they, they are not, they're not kind to our constituency.
Yeah, so that is one of the thoughts behind this position is that there's a dedicated person that can be very responsive, um.
So you'll change, you'll change, you'll have to change when I call in or they call in. It does, it goes now, I hit number one, if I have a trash concern, it goes straight to CRNR, so.
I think we would want to evaluate the call, um, how many calls are actually going directly to CRNR? Just to make sure that that is manageable, because right now there's a high volume of calls that are coming to us outside of those calls that are being automatically transferred. So we can definitely evaluate, but I think we'd want to see what that call volume looks like.
Well, I would like that staff members to take care of our customers. They can, that, they can deal with CRNR rather than the, the customer.
What if we, what if we had an, uh, overall issues column? Just in case anything, you know, it's a catch-all.
It's a trash, it's the trash calls in particular that irritate the customer if CRNR tries to address them, or they don't address them, but anyway.
This position is just proposed, it's not been approved, is that correct?
Not yet.
Okay.
We're proposing through this budget.
So you put that budget just in case?
Yes. Yes. So the proposed personnel budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six is approximately four point, um, six million, which include the solid waste, uh, one point two million from, for the solid waste and three point four million for, for the wastewater, representing an eleven percent increase over the, um, current fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five adopted budget. So here is the solid waste total salaries and benefits. Here's the total for wastewater, that's include HQ staff and wastewater. And if you add these two together, it's approximately four point six million comparing to, it's an eleven percent increase comparing to the current adopted budget fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, four point one million. And, um, the, there, there are several factors that contribute to this increase and we kind of jump back and forth discussing that. One is the, uh, cost of living, COLA, three point one percent. Additional certificate pay for employees who, um, obtain specialized wastewater certification. The district offers a range of benefits related to premium pay for employees in specialized position, including four levels of certification through the California Water Environment Association and welding cer- certification. Several wastewater staff members have expressed interest in obtaining additional certification, um, over the next two fiscal years. Also included in here is, um, an annual merit up to five percent for eligible staff. Both full-time and part-time employees are eligible for annual merit increase based on their total average score from their annual performance evaluation until the employee reaches their maximum salary range. Merit increase, merit increases may range up to five percent. For example, I could get a three percent, a four percent, or a max five percent for my annual review. It is not a guarantee that all staff will receive the full five percent increase, but for budgeting purposes, um, staff assumed a five percent increase for all employees who have not yet reached their, um, maximums salary range.
What, what has been the average increase, Scott, for this position, for these annual merits?
Four to five percent. Uh, there's, most, most of our employees perform very well. They, they achieve their goals and they perform well, so they'll, you know, get a four to five percent. A couple will get three percent. But, um, yeah, most, most of our employees do very well.
Add on top of the cost of living adjustment?
Included in the solid waste fund budget, staff is proposing a new solid waste administrat- administrative assistant position to enhance cus- enhance customer service and support in the solid waste department. Um, today I have Marissa Pareda, our senior management analyst, to, um, present the needs for an additional staff in the solid waste department.
Thank you, Caitlin, good morning. Um, as Caitlin mentioned, we are proposing a new solid waste administrative assistant one. So the new, this new position would perform duties, administrative and customer service type duties that are currently being performed by the senior management analyst in the solid waste department. These duties include things like providing high-level customer service for phone, email, and walk-in customers, um, inputting GO-GOV service requests and monitoring GO-GOV reporting and trends, including performance, uh, quarterly performance measurement data, processing new service accounts, which includes verifying eligibility, processing applications and payments, and tracking new service with CRNR. They'd also track common questions and complaints from customers, um, to develop social media content and FAQs. And then they would perform other administrative and customer service type duties, um, as assigned. The administrative assistant would be able to provide that highly focused and responsive customer service that we mentioned earlier. This would also alleviate these duties from the senior management analyst, allowing them to focus on their more complex duties and assignments such as contract management and negotiations, franchise hall or performance review, SB thirteen eighty-three compliance, uh, rate studies, program and project management, budget administration, and leadership. The new administrative assistant would also be the main, um, contact for the district's main telephone line, which would lessen the impact of calls on the district's engineering staff. And I'm happy to answer questions if you have any.
What position is doing those things right now?
The senior management analyst, myself.
Marissa?
So, so what, what you just described, and I think you alluded to this, was kind of what Vice President Putin had mentioned earlier about someone who could focus on issues. That's going to be part of this person's.
Exactly, they would be dedicated to those customer service type duties and wouldn't be, like with, with me, I'm doing the customer service and administrative duties, but also all of the higher level, more complex duties. And so there are times where you have to choose between the two. So they'd be able to focus solely on customer service.
In addition, included in the solid waste, uh, fund budget, a promotion of the senior management analyst to solid waste manager. Scott Carroll, the district manager, will present the needs for this promotion.
Thank you, Caitlin. So most of the departments have a department head that not only serves the department as their leader, but also serves on my leadership team. And we meet on a regular basis and we discuss issues that are facing the district. It could be policy and procedures, it could be new programs, um, it could be the overall operation, the organizations. Basically, I, I depend on my team, we collaborate together and together we make decisions for betterment of the organization. The solid waste department is the only department that does not have a department head. As you heard, um, uh, the senior management analyst does oversee that department, but that position is an upper management position, it's, but however, it's not a department head. It does not serve on, on my, my leadership team. Uh, when I discussed this idea with the leadership team, having someone from the, uh, on the solid waste representative on our team, everyone agreed that that would be a good idea because we were receiving, uh, expert advice on solid waste management issues. And it would also empower the team members, uh, to have robust conversations about, um, our existing and future solid waste management system. As you heard, um, the solid wa- from Marissa, the, the, the solid waste manager position were really focused on high-level type assignments, uh, like she said, contract negotiations, CRNR performance review, um, ensuring entry compliance, performing rate studies, planning outreach efforts, really high-level stuff, while the more day-to-day minutia stuff would be responsibility of the administrative assistant. And, and those, again, like, like Marissa said, be answering phone calls, responding to emails, purchasing office supplies, maintaining the database system. Right now, as you heard, Marissa's doing that, and I think that's way too much, she's spending way too much time on that. I need her to focus on the high-level stuff. More recently, um, upcoming here in the near future, I like her doing a, the verbal rate study, um, that I wanted to present to you on, on how we can do, propose a verbal rate system for the district. She's also being more involved in the Y's agreement with the county.
What, what, what did you just say, the, the what?
Verbal rates, you know, the, the, the three-card system, uh, verbal, different sizes, uh, she'll be doing analysis on that. So that's stuff she needs to focus on, but when she's, but, but when she's spending time answering phone calls or emails, it, it takes away from her duties doing that. So that's why I think the solid waste manager position would assist us on a leadership team and will also, um, be better served on the department. The solid waste manager would oversee the code enforcement officer and the administrative, um, um, assistant, if that's approved by, by the board. So I believe the solid waste manager's position will better serve the solid waste department and the organization. Happy to answer the questions you may have.
This is just the proposed.
Correct.
Thank you, Scott. Included in the wastewater fund budget is a new electrical and instrumenta- instrumentation technician position. Today I have John Gonzalez, wastewater maintenance manager, uh, will present the needs for this new position.
Morning, members of the board. The proposed entry-level electrical instrumentation technician will perform essential maintenance support tasks currently handled by senior-level staff or external contractors. These responsibilities include conducting preventative maintenance on pump station assets, troubleshooting electrical and instrumentation issues, performing routine calibrations, assisting with SCADA system operations, and ensuring compliance with safety regulations such as OSHA, NFPA, NEC. Additionally, the technician will maintain accurate maintenance records and support data tracking for performance measures, measurement. The day-to-day responsibilities will include troubleshooting station problems, exercising valves to ensure proper operation, conducting annual service on pumps to maintain efficiency and longevity, and responding to emergencies to minimize downtime and service disruptions. The technician, uh, let's see, by assigning these routine electrical and instrumentation tasks to an entry-level technician, senior personnel will be able to focus on complex system optimizations, regulatory compliance efforts, capital improvement projects, and high-level troubleshooting. This, uh, restructuring enhances operational efficiency, minimizes service disruptions, and reduces reliance on costly external services. Furthermore, a dedicated in-house ENI technician will improve response times for electrical and instrumentation issues, ensuring the continued reliability of pump station infrastructure. The position will also help maintain coverage on both the pump and sewer sides during periods of short staffing, preventing service delays and ensuring uninterrupted operations. The role will support workforce development by creating opportunities for internal growth, knowledge transfer, and long-term succession planning. As automation and smart instrumentation become increasingly integrated into pump station operations, this role will be instrumental in adapting to technological advancements and maintaining system efficiency. Any questions?
Do we have anybody in the field right now that could handle this job? Or do we have to go outside?
Well, this is going to, uh, yeah, we, we have people that can do all the work. It's just the matter of, uh, we're, we run a skeleton crew. If one person has training or is off or is sick or is assigned something else, then that crew doesn't go out. Right, as it is right now, we have coverage, we have complete coverage, but as, uh, things grow and the technology expands and the systems get more complicated, there's going to be more and more, uh, equipment and things that need to be maintained at the stations.
I like the idea, great. I just, it was, do we have somebody that can move right up to that position or do we have to go outside?
For this position, we'd have to go outside.
Being that it's a, an entry level.
It's an entry level, but it's, it's, uh, emphasis on the instrumentation, like in the, uh.
No, I, I completely agree with you, I think it's great. Just, that's just a question I had. I think we should hire somebody for that position.
Yes.
And we just have one person mainly doing that task now?
We have, we have a supervisor and then an electrical instrumentation tech. They're, they're pretty much stressed pretty thin. And then they also go out to the stations, uh, individually. And, uh, in some cases, in, in my opinion, I think there should be a second person there. Yeah, so, uh, but we, we may see some movement in, in that, in the pump station side. And then this would just be the entry level. So other tasks with the current people, they may be getting into, uh, performing other tasks and all that, as if somebody comes in. So, any questions?
No, I think it's good.
Sorry about being so nervous up here. You guys are intimidating.
Just, just, just this one right here. She's the intimidating.
She's giving me the evil eye.
Yeah.
Okay, so moving on, included in this budget are adjustments to the cafeteria plan, workers' compensation, and a new benefit. Diana Bojarzki, the district administrative services manager, will present the detail of each benefit.
Good morning. So the district's benefit package is crucial for employee retention and for morale for recruiting purposes as well. So providing health, providing benefits that align with industry standards help CMSD remain competitive in the job market. Medical plan rates have seen an average increase over the past five years of seven point eight seven percent annually. And, and so the district is anticipating that we will continue to see an annual increase of at least that amount. And the primary factors contributing to these increases include medical inflation, rising pharmaceutical costs, and adjustments to premiums to align with the value of the benefits and the networks. So CMSD's intent is to contribute to each cafeteria plan tier, uh, the following amounts. So for employee only, it's a one hundred percent of the cost of the average health plan. And then for an employee plus one dependent, uh, the intent is to cover eighty percent of the cost of the average plan. And then for an employee with two or more dependents, the intent is to cover eighty percent of the cost of the average plan. And as you can see, um, staff is proposing for twenty twenty-six, the, that there would be no change to the employee-only amount, it would stay at one thousand two hundred per month. But the employee plus one dependent would increase by two hundred dollars. And then the employee plus two or more dependents would increase two hundred and sixty-five dollars a month. Keeping in mind that this is the only contribution to an employee's benefit package the district does make for health benefits, yes. for health benefits, yes.
Get our health benefits through S D R M A.
Calpers. So calpers for the medical.
It is through Calpers.
But dental and vision are through S D R M A, yes. But this is not, um, we were just looking at the calpers rate because that's the biggest chunk. The dental and vision are, are not nearly.
Our business, if you call this a business, is not immune to this. Every other business, private and public, is really struggling right now with this whole, with what's going on with medical payments. So, um, I think we're, I think what we do in terms of the eighty percent is pretty generous. And I think it's, it's a good benefit. I, it's one that, like you said, insulates a lot of things and, uh, I'm okay with what you're talking about, so.
Okay. And then if we, if we want to look at twenty twenty seven, then we're, we are in twenty twenty seven. We're proposing to increase the employee only by one hundred dollars a month. The employee plus one dependent by one hundred and fifty dollars per month. And the employee plus two or more dependents, one hundred and sixty dollars per month more than what we're proposing for twenty twenty five. So that, are there any questions on, on that?
Marissa's right. You're the insurance guy.
Not anymore. Under cafeteria plan, if they exercise a lesser option and that they're eligible for a higher amount, do they get that higher amount or do we, we don't, we don't just?
Yes.
We do. I mean, we give them one cafeteria plan. We give them a bucket and they get the whole bucket.
Yes.
They don't use part of that bucket on premiums. We pay them that difference.
They do get that difference. So, yes. But typically what happens, especially for employee plus two or more dependents, they're paying out of pocket for their, for their family. Yes.
That was my next thought. Under the health benefits plan with calpers, you, you said that we pay the average plan, which is kind of like, when you look at plans, there's a silver standard, a gold standard of whatever. So we, we pay the middle, or the average of what all of them.
That's what we're proposing. This is based on the average cost. We have, I think, five, six plans to choose from, and so we just took the average cost. We know that the lowest cost plan is, I'm not, yeah, and I don't want to name that plan, but it's, it's, it's not. I was just talking to an employee today who had gone to the doctor and his doctor pretty much told him, yeah, your insurance stinks.
On Medicare. So they, they get the, is there a, do we, is there an option for a Kaiser plan in there?
Yes, but Kaiser's not, Kaiser used to be the cheapest and it's not anymore. It's, it's even expensive.
Kaiser's reputation as a medical provider has skyrocketed over the last five years, ten years. They, nobody would go to Kaiser because they thought, oh, that's the bottom of the barrel anymore. Kaiser has reached a, a pretty, and having a big facility in Irvine is really helpful to all of us, I think. Okay. I, I like the fact that we give our employees options. There's so many companies, so many agencies that say, take this or leave this. And you guys are doing a good job giving something that fits whatever the employee wants it to fit. So I appreciate that.
Yeah, and it was nice as an employee to have those options. I did last year, I participated in a webinar with Calpers and it sounds like they're going towards eliminating P P O completely. I don't know when that will happen, but H M O seems to be the way. Yeah. Okay, so moving on to workers' compensation. So our, um, our workers' compensation estimated cost for twenty five, twenty six is sixty three thousand three hundred. It's a decrease of fifty thousand eight hundred from twenty four, twenty five. And the factors for those decreases include the estimated payroll provided in the twenty five, twenty six renewal questionnaire that we provided to S D R M A. It also includes our calculated E mod of ninety six percent, so we're getting better with that. And then the pool reinsurance rate increase of sixteen to twenty four percent based on early estimates from S D R M A's reinsurance brokers, which, Mr. President, I'm sure you know more about that than we two.
Although in May, you haven't got the final rate yet.
We, we've got the anticipated rate, but yeah, not the final bill now.
Yeah, I think it'll probably be lower than that.
Right.
But regardless of that, for you guys to drop your premium by fifty one thousand dollars is, it's testimony to, to what you're doing to encourage safety with employees. I mean, nobody drops their workers' comp premium. And you guys did it. I mean, that's very commendable and the whole organization, I think, has, has paid duty to this. And congratulations, that's, that's quite an achievement. Fifty thousand goes a long way to pay for added positions and things that you want, want us to consider.
Or even safety training, which we wouldn't spend that much on, but, yeah. Okay, and then, um, next we have, uh, what we're, it's just a working title, service loyalty pay. But after the feedback I heard earlier, we can look at other options for that title. We're not, you know, we're not married to that. But if, if you can remember, the board, as part of the classification and compensation study that we completed in twenty twenty four, we spoke about longevity pay, but at that time, the board had directed staff to come back with more information. And the board was really wanting to know, is this persible? Is it going to affect an employee's pension? And so we worked with Calpers and they gave us a final determination that the plan that we have drafted is not persible, so it will not affect an employee's pension. It's a one-time payment. And so the way that it would work is because we, we think it's important to maintain quality staff and retain them in their positions, that institutional knowledge, all of that is important. And so we are proposing that the district would, um, in, in a form, reward those employees that have reached the maximum in their salary range. And so we put some criteria together with this. And so there's three areas that the employee would have to meet. They would have to first have reached the maximum in their salary range for their position. They would have to be with the district for a minimum of five years to be eligible. And then the employee would also have to receive, receive a rating of at least above expectations on their annual performance evaluation. So then the amount of service loyalty pay would be determined based on the criteria of if that employee has met at least one of their performance, if they've only met one of their performance goals. Typically, an employee has three performance goals they have to meet every year that is set by their, their supervisor. So if an employee meets just one of those performance goals and gets at least an above expectations on their annual performance evaluation, they would get one percent of their annual salary. If they have achieved two of their performance goals, they'd get two percent of their annual salary. And if they have achieved three of their performance goals, they would receive three percent of their annual salary. And then it would stop at that. If an employee had four goals, for some reason, they wouldn't get four percent. And that would be one time, one time payment. And so staff is proposing to make this effective in the twenty five, twenty six fiscal year. But at that time, no employees would be eligible to receive the benefit. But starting in twenty six, twenty seven, one employee would be eligible. And the cost for that is, is listed. If that employee received one percent of their, or I'm sorry, achieved one of their goals on their performance evaluation, they'd receive two thousand one hundred dollars. If they achieved two goals, they'd receive four thousand three hundred dollars. If they achieved all three of their goals, they would receive six thousand four hundred dollars as part of that, that benefit.
How can an employee achieve one goal and get above expectations in, in their performance review?
I would have to say that would be near impossible because the goals are tied to the rating. But if for, if for some reason, you know, we could adjust this and we could make it a requirement, then they have to receive all, or have to achieve all three of their goals. You know, that's up to the board.
And you say it's a one-time deal. They would only get it once ever?
Well, they would get, if, if for that year, if they're maxed out in their salary range, they're eligible. And then the following year, if they're, you know, if they're maxed out again, they would get it. But, um, depending on also like the cost of living increase that an employee gets every year, if, if, if the board approves that.
I don't know. So if in twenty twenty nine, thirty, he could, somebody could get fifty five thousand dollar increase in their pay for that one.
No, that's the total of the ten employees.
The what? Oh, the total. That'd be five thousand dollars. Okay.
Yeah.
And that, that would be assuming that we retained employees. And, and I'd also like to state that if, so if we hire somebody for a position that we feel is, um, more qualified than, you know, the, the pool of candidates, and they, they negotiate for it to start at a higher rate and they reach their salary maximum, they, they still have to be here five years. Like if they reach their max in two or three years, they won't be eligible to receive this.
Five years in that position?
Um, five years with the district.
Five years in the position, is that a guess?
Yes, but it's not necessarily because say we hire somebody at a management analyst one position, then they promote to management analyst two. So it's not, not necessarily the position they hired into. It's have, if, have they been an employee of the district for five years?
So back to Scott, so if it's four or five, if they get four or five under discussion with you and you give them a five, they would, is that the max? You have to get the point system at you.
Max for merit increase.
Yeah, for merit.
Yes.
Is five the max?
Yes.
So I would, like Bob's idea is I'd, I'd say you have to have the max to get an increase personally. Not one percent or three percent. It has to be the five.
So you're saying that they have to complete all the newer goals in order to get the, the?
That's what I'm looking at, but you deal with that. I really don't deal with that. I mean, that's just my suggestion, but I kind of like what Bob says. I, I, I think that, um, if someone is going to get it, it's above expectations in one, they're probably going to be in all three anyway. I mean, in my experience with employees, if they have one level exceeding expectations, they're going to be across the board. But I don't know.
I don't know. That's why I'm, because I'm not part of that.
Yeah, well, the other thing is, as we get into twenty nine or twenty eight, twenty nine, or even twenty seven, twenty eight, just honestly, if you have ten employees that are eligible for this bonus and they all get exceeds expected,
Yeah.
then your standards are too low. Does that make sense? I mean, I mean, I don't mean that, I don't mean that fully, but it's hard. I mean, we should be, you should attain it. You, you shouldn't have the above expectations as an easy goal, as far as I'm concerned.
There need to be some stretch goals.
There needs to be something in it. Um, the other question I had, so twenty six, twenty seven, not a one employee qualified. Let's just say, we're going to give them a check for sixty four hundred dollars or add sixty four hundred dollars to their period. Right? Next year, in twenty
Twenty seven.
Seven, twenty eight, they may or may not get that extra money. It's not, if they get it once, they don't get it forever. I just want to make, make that clear.
Correct.
They've got to do it every year to get that.
Yes, maintain that. And, and, you know, that person may also promote to a higher position with a higher salary range, though it's going to take them a little longer to get to that max, you know, there's all kinds of scenarios.
I'm just curious, why isn't it personal? It's money.
Yeah, that's, that's a question.
It's a one-time payment. It's not, it doesn't affect their hourly rate. It doesn't affect their, their pension. Yes, and so we wanted to make sure of that, so we did get that, that final determination in writing from Calpers.
That's good for Pers. I mean, it's saving everybody a little bit of money and putting the onus back on the district or the agency to pay it and not have everybody else pay for it. So, good for them.
This is a minimal benefit. Pay, pay, vacation pay and sick leave pay can be massive.
Oh, yeah, I, I agree. This, this is a minimal type payment, but it's a valuable one. You know, if I want to buy a new car at the end of the year, I'm going to work my butt off all year to get it exceeded. So if, if I'm already backed down, so. Being facetious. Thank you.
Any more questions on salaries and benefit, benefits before we're moving on to main operations and maintenance?
Under both categories, under the administrative and the wastewater, can you just briefly tell me what, I think I know these, but coming from the expert better. Explain to me what the retirement expense is for and what the Medicare expense is for. Right there.
The retirement employer and the employee portion versus the Medicare. So retirement employer, um, that's the portion where the, it's the district cost for all employees. For the retirement employee portion, you see it's only three thousand for solid waste and twelve thousand for wastewater. It's because there are only, um, one employee that the district picking up the employee portion.
I, I think every year we ask that. There is, is it Joan Rebeck still?
No, no, this is current staff.
Oh, current staff, okay.
Yeah.
So we have two Sheri and Joan, right?
The current staff. Yeah.
That, we have two in here, two in Turner. So we're paying into their retirement plan, correct? Not into?
So, um, Scott is right. There are two employees, but we're talking about the administrative section here. So there, for the three thousand and the twelve thousand, that's for one employee's Calpers employee portion that the district picked up. And then there's the second employee that's under wastewater maintenance. So you see there's also a line for retirement employer and retirement employee. Yes.
I forgot that person's attached to that. So all of this retirement and Medicare and stuff is all their Pers retirement.
Yes.
Okay.
So Medicare line, that's we, we pay to the federal. That's, that's separate than the Calpers.
Now, remember Scott, how many years ago did we change that?
From the Bell scandal, back in two thousand thirteen. Where, you know, so that before that, most public agencies were paying for the employee and the employer's share of hers. Then Bell, uh, uh, happened and so, um, all the organizations did a tier system where new employees would come in. They would, um, um, have a different retirement formula and they'd have to pay their employee's share.
Yeah, so, uh, P E P R A plan started January of two thousand thirteen. And that's for employer portion for all staff H Q, it's included on the top section. And then for wastewater is the bottom section. Okay, so moving on to O and M section for fiscal year two thousand twenty five, twenty six. Sorry about that. The administrative section include expenses at H Q. So this section here, it's all for H Q. And the O and M for wastewater is for the field staff. I'm sorry, the district yard, um, pump station and sewer lines, anything related to the district yard wastewater. Okay, the proposed O and M budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty five, twenty six total approximately thirteen, eleven point three million. That, that's glue transfer out programs and capital. thirteen, eleven point three million, that, that's clue transfer out programs and capital improvement projects. So, the administrative total plus the wastewater maintenance equal approximately eleven point three percent. Eleven point three million. Of this amount, seven point eight million is the solid waste fund, and three point five million is the wastewater fund, representing an eight percent increase over the current fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five approved budget. This increase mainly due to inflation, higher living cost, and a few new or expanded projects in accounts such as the professional services account, the GIS sewer maintenance, public info, education, community promotion, small tools and equipment for district yard, capital outlay. That's listed here, if you go to attachment A, starting on page four through nine, there are, you'll see the detail more budget line item for each of these accounts. Today I have the general manager, the district engineer, and the senior management analyst, who will provide information on these budget line items that is listed here.
I'll start with the, the first two on professional services. So, the solar system, battery storage, this was actually, you might recall, the board encouraged, I had this as one of my goals, and the board encouraged me to tune in this, so we put this in the budget, and, and that was to look at if, if there, one of those additional, if there's any space to put a battery storage here at, at HQ, that would kind of, that would serve as a, a backup energy provider if there was a power outage, so it would, it would charge the solar systems that we have here at HQ, and if the power goes out, then the battery system will kick in, and we don't have to bring a generator in, so. So, well, the, the only question I have really is, can we store one? And how big of a, how big of a battery does it have to be, and where can we store it? I think that's where the study needs, needs determined for us. And then the second line on the, the service system management plan audit, we now have to do the audit every, every three years, next fiscal year will be the third year, so we have to do that audit. As you know, we, we hire, usually hire an outside consultant, we do an RFP, and a consultant will come in and evaluate our SSMP, make sure it's in compliance, and also offer some recommendations. In years past, it's been, EEC has done that, so, but we'll, again, do an RFP and, and see.
Who's done that in the past?
EEC, environmental.
I think that, I think that's inappropriate, I don't believe that's their forte. I would like to see us use a different consultant.
They've done, they've, I'd say, it's, all the ones that we've done, I think, the only other consultant that's done it was, Will Dan has done one for us, Will Dan Engineering, but EECs always came down as a low bid, and so we, and they're qualified, they are qualified to do it. They, they demonstrated to us. I don't know what, I didn't understand what, what makes you think they're not qualified?
Who, well.
EEC.
I would, I would like to have, I'll look into what Orange County, the Orange County San District just did this.
Okay.
And I'll look into who their consultants.
Sure. Sure.
Yeah, I, Director Oot, and I think HDR did Orange County Sanitations audit the last time that they, they went through an audit, but I was involved in the, in this past SSMP audit, and we only received two, HDR actually declined to submit a proposal on that particular RFP for auditing services, and then we had, we had a couple of them, and EEC with the experience, the agencies they've worked for, they were the successful proposer based on experience, cost, among other items.
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll be looking to help you in that regard.
Sure.
And I'll turn it over to Mark, he'll give you a description on the updated standards and drawings.
Yeah, the, it's probably been late seventies for some of our standard drawings, I know it was in the nineties, we updated some things, but we haven't in that time, so it's been thirty-five years or so since we've had any major update in our standards, and we're finding right now with plumbers, different materials, for example, back thirty-five years ago, they didn't really have slip lining, they didn't have structural liners for pipelines, and so we have to update our standards in order to allow for those things to be used by plumbers on private property or commercial businesses. And in addition, our contractors that we hire to do our work, we're finding that, that we're having to make many exceptions, and so it's time to make the upgrades to our standards after about a twenty to thirty-year period. And that's what this project will do, is bring our standards up to current technology, current practices, where we can adopt Green Book standards, we will do that, but it'll look at all of that comprehensively.
Is forty thousand dollars enough?
I believe so, we've had higher estimates, but I've had lower estimates as well, so this is a middle-of-the-road number.
Okay, so I'm going to be sharing some information about our IT grant. As the board may be aware, the district was one of ninety-seven local agencies that received this grant for state and local cybersecurity projects. I have one caveat, which is that we are waiting for FEMA's official approval letter, but it has been approved by CalOES, and they've assured us that it, it is coming, it's just a matter of when. But our, our grant totals about a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, and this is going to be distributed and managed by CalOES. The funding was approved for five very specific projects, and I'm not going to go into too much detail about each project, just to kind of preserve our safeguarding strategies, but as a general overview, you'll see the projects listed there, it's the, the last four items, and there is one additional project. So, the first project is meant to really improve our ability to detect and stop, stop malicious activity on our network. We have another project that is going to monitor the dark web for any district credentials or passwords that may be floating around. We're also working on a project that is going to block malicious websites to kind of safeguard staff when we're using the internet and browsing for information. And then really the big project is that we are going to be moving a lot of our physical equipment onsite at our facilities to the cloud. So that's actually the most expensive and really the most important project. The last one that, it's not listed specifically up there, it's actually under IT project labor, because the only thing we're paying for is the labor for this project, but we're going to be updating our operating system just to take advantage of some of the new and increased security features on that operating system. So, as you can see, it's all about security, trying to patch any vulnerabilities that we have. And we are pretty fortunate to have received this funding, these are projects that a lot of local agencies can't afford to do, especially the cloud migration project. So the, these projects are going to be conducted by our IT service provider, Acorn Technology. And the, the, the grant goes until the end of two thousand twenty-six, so that's our deadline for completing all of these projects. As you can see, they're included in the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget, so we're going to try to complete them all in that fiscal year. If we need to, we can roll over to twenty-six, twenty-seven, but we're going to try to get them done as soon as we can.
So, we're going to do this, and then when we get the funds, it'll be put back into this program?
It is a reimbursement-based grant, so I think as we complete the projects, we can send them our invoices and get reimbursed along the way.
So no matter what, we're going to do it? Which is good, I like that.
Yes.
Ten years ago, we didn't even think about this stuff, five years ago, we didn't even think about this stuff, and now when you
Yeah, to think about it daily.
And I know SDRMA is taking a big step to provide some cybersecurity stuff and all, so those programs will be rolling out too, hopefully.
Yes, and it's a continuous effort, I'm sure in a year or two, we're going to need more, so, that's just how it is.
Even know how to get on the dark web.
Probably a good thing.
You may be on it.
All right, the, the final, the final item on the professional services list is a solid waste rate study. So, Orange County Waste and Recycling is expected to raise the waste disposal fee or the tipping fee, gate fee, it's that per ton fee that's paid at the landfill to dispose of waste, that is expected to increase effective July one of two thousand twenty-six. So in order to make sure that our customer rates are generating enough revenue to cover that higher disposal cost, we are looking at conducting a solid waste rate study at the end of either this calendar year or early next calendar year. And along with making sure the rate will generate enough revenue, we can also evaluate the variable rate option to encourage waste reduction and increased diversion.
When was the last time we did a solid waste rate study?
We just did one last year. But because the disposal fee is increasing unexpectedly, we, we need to look at the rates again.
Do, don't we also need to do a wastewater study concerning, is that coming up?
The next fiscal year.
Next year?
It's the twenty-six, twenty-seven.
And that is because of the the Eldon Forest main?
No, it's because we, it'd be the, after, we've already had five years in our last five wastewater rate study, and we had having a rate increase in wastewater site for three years, so, but, but the Eldon would be part of that, yes, we would look at, as part of the study, what would it take to, assuming, assuming we receive grant funds from FEMA, we still have to match twenty-five percent of that, so the, the study will look at, how do we recoup that twenty-five percent? The other side is if we don't receive the grant money, then there really is no other alternative but bonding, we have to go into debt. And so to do that, then how, what would those rates be to pay that debt back? So that study would all tie, tie into those, those two areas.
Well, wasn't one of those, one of those rate increases had a five million dollar I, line item that I thought was for the Eldon pump station? Oh, okay.
Mark, do you want to talk about the GIS sewer maintenance?
Let me, in a text. Is this a good time to, before we get into Mark's stuff, to take?
Might, I still, we got two more slides, then we take a break? Because then, then we talk about, then we go into twenty-six, twenty-seven, so maybe finish off this fiscal year, and then take a break, and then we can go into twenty-six, twenty-seven?
Our, our legs are going like this.
No, mine are fine, that's your. All right, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. President. The districts have City Works, which is an asset management system, and as part of that, there is a permitting module, and right now we issue all sewer permits and, and related items through that system. We have a fat soil and grease management firm, they help us administer, manage the, the fat soil and grease program for our agency. They are currently hosting our data in a, in a database in their facilities at their, at their company. We're to the point where the district staff, I guess I'll say I am recommending to our general manager and to our board that we move, migrate that data from an external provider into our city work system for several, several reasons. But the next two line items, the EEC support for data migration, and then the fat soil and grease database importing is two different firms, we currently have a firm called Centricity that helps us manage and the, the graphical information system or GIS system. And they've given us a proposal to migrate the information from our outside service provider, the consultant, into our own system, and then the EEC support is for that company to work with district staff and our Centricity, our GIS provider, in order to answer questions, translate information, and get a seamless, or knock on wood, hopefully seamless migration from the, the consultant's database into the, our agency's database, so that's what those two items are for. The last item, GIS public portal, is basically to install an improved public access portal. Right now, we do have an access portal, but it basically will take an application for a permit, and that's about it, it doesn't have a lot of feedback back to the, to the customers and the permatees. Our current permit, our portal access does allow for customers to pay invoices online. What the, this, what I'm proposing is an, is an improvement over what we're doing, it will allow for other items such as effective inspection requests, right now we use email system, and between staff's email, the permitting email, phone calls, and everything else, occasionally we lose inspection requests, where if we can focus inspection requests through the public portal, we will have less missed inspection requests. And then, the current system also relies on having staff in-house, so if our inspection tech, for example, leaves on vacation, we occasionally miss things because someone's maybe not as familiar with the permitting email misses something here or there. So we're going to be moving to an improved public access portal to make the permitting process, the fee process, inspection process, and other processes more user-friendly, and more of a one-stop shop, rather than doing some things over the phone, some things over email, and then some things via the internet. And that concludes my, my presentation.
Who, who would be monitoring that access?
The access would be the engineering department, specifically our engineering tech, and then the engineering admin that, that is in the engineering department. I would act as a backup in case somebody's gone, or if they're both gone for whatever reason, I would be the backup for that.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, the next discussion will be CRNR rates, it may be, I don't know if you want to take a break here?
I, let's, let's, I say we plow through this, because the next slide, then we're done with twenty-five, twenty-six, and then take a break, then we go twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Okay. So the major expenses for solid waste fund are CRNR costs. The senior management analyst will present the detail of CRNR cost projections. All right, so I'll go over what each of these items are, how the rate applies to each, and then how we've projected the rate or the, the budget amount for each of those items, so first occupancy or trash hauler, that is what the district pays to CRNR for collection services. So that includes things like driver wages, equipment, which is trucks and carts, maintenance costs, administrative costs, and SB thirteen eighty-three compliance costs, so that's the actual cost of collection. Recycling and landfill is what the district pays CRNR for the one processing of recycling. So we pay a per-ton fee for processing that recycling, and then there's a per-ton fee for disposing of the landfill waste. And then the fourth rate that you see there is organics, and that is the cost for CRNR to transport organic waste to the anaerobic digestion facility in Paris, and convert that into renewable natural gas and compost. So those are the four kind of categories that the district is paying to CRNR. Each of those items is tied to a rate, which you'll see listed on the chart on the slide. The occupancy rate is paid per trash account, so per active account, for example, if we have twenty-three thousand accounts, then we pay that occupancy rate per account. Landfill, recycling, and organics are all paid on a per-ton basis. So the current fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five rates are listed on the slide, and then you'll see the proposed twenty-five, twenty-six rate, that's based on a three point one percent CPI increase. Each year CRNR, per our contract, is able to submit a request for a Each year, CRNR per our contract is able to submit a request for a CPI increase. They have submitted the request for twenty five, twenty six for three point one percent, which we will be presenting to the board at the end of the month. And so, that is the amount that we use to project the twenty five, twenty six rates. So, we take those rates and we use what we're projecting for both occupancy and tonnage to get the budget amount that we're looking at. So, for occupancy, we're projecting an increase of one hundred and one accounts over the current fiscal year, and that's based on the trends that we've seen over the past few years. So, if we take that projected occupancy count, multiply it by that proposed three point one percent increase rate that we pay monthly, we get that four point nine million for occupancy or trash hauler. For recycling and landfill, those are both two newer fees. So, we used to have the mixed waste rate, now we have the separate recycling and landfill rate. And so, because December was the first full month, or first month that all customers had that three cart system, so it was the first month where we could really get accurate tonnage data, we took an average of December, January, and February tonnage to project for next fiscal year. So, we took that average and then multiplied it by that, the new proposed rate to get seventy four thousand six hundred for recycling and one point four million for landfill. And then, for organics, because we do have recurring data for that, it's not a new rate, it's something that we've been paying. We've looked at the average from July of two thousand and twenty four through February of this year to determine the, the average that we're going to apply to, to the new rate. So, it has fluctuated, kind of goes up, it kind of goes down, you know, year after year. And so, we took that average without an increase or decrease to project the seven hundred and fifty four thousand dollars for organics. And I'm happy to answer.
Can these be adjusted as we go through the different months? Or not? It, because you're assuming these figures, right?
Yeah, so the three point one percent is based on CRNR's actual request, and then the others are based on an average. So, we have to project for the full year, and so, we have to look at, determine what average is a suitable projection for that full year.
Can they be adjusted, is my question? Can we adjust them based on the real figures or not?
Um, I mean, we, not for the budget projection, so we have to use the data that's available to determine that. Obviously, what we actually spend will, will fluctuate, yeah.
It's going to change a little bit, I think.
It, yes, it will probably not be exactly that amount, but we do project to get it as close as we can based on the data that's available.
Better by getting it where it needs to be projected. I appreciate that. I think, I think the one thing that's still hanging over us is the land, the new landfill chart. We have no idea when and if. So, I appreciate you guys at least having that in the back of your mind, because it's gonna, in some way, shape, or form, it's gonna happen.
Yes.
But not a matter of if, it's when.
It will happen. It, it will be effective July one of two thousand and twenty six, we just don't know what it will be yet, right?
I just want to add to that, that we're presenting these projections today. But let's say May or June, when it's time for adoption, May will bring this back for more discussion. But let's say the, there's changes in the tonnage from now to then, we may adjust this projection.
Done that.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think they're appropriately conservative. The trash hauler rate, it's going up fifty two percent, or the landfill rate. Damn it. Anyway, I've lost it.
How many times you've used the word appropriate? Just three. Just three? Yeah. All right. Is this the time? Getting, leaving looks. Let's take a.
I and Art will most be able to think better.
Better take, great help out. What time are we?
Bob is going to ask you to.
Hey, now, if, if I'm, how do I get my speaker on?
Oh, it's already on.
It's on right now, so you could, if I was speaking, then you could.
You can hear you. Then here's your camera. So, I think, so here's the camera.
Okay.
And then, this is closed.
Okay.
And then, there's on.
It wears on.
So, when you see it red, that's closed.
It's, it's on.
So, we slide out. Leave it on.
You'll even come up microphone.
Our microphone is on. Yeah, we can test it.
I got to go to a meeting tomorrow for Home Works Association, and I don't have a microphone in my little theater. And we use this one. It's a Zoom meeting, but.
You need to get a remote mouse, too.
I got one.
Have you ever had a remote mouse?
Uh huh, sure.
Get that little.
Well, in order to speed this up, I think staff told us we'd get out of here by eleven.
More like twelve.
Huh?
More like twelve.
Well, though, I mean, maybe we just do differences in, in the, in the next year's budget.
Or, or, or we could do, if you want to, we could, you know, schedule another close, or another special meeting to continue with it, you know?
It's how many more slides, like twelve more slides?
Yeah.
It's twelve more slides.
But it's a lot of information still, and it's, it's good information to know, and we can, it's up to you. If you don't want to go for another hour, we can, if you don't mind scheduling another special meeting, we can do that.
You know, I, I don't have any to go to except my garage, so I.
Okay.
I love it.
Well, I'll try to be quiet.
Can we give it a shot, see if we can move? Okay.
Okay.
Because, because time, because time is obvious for both things.
I think the second year will go faster.
Okay.
The first year is more detailed. Okay, so now, we're looking at fiscal year two thousand and twenty six, twenty seven, and that is attachment B. The proposed person. The proposed personnel budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty six, twenty seven is approximately five million dollars, which includes one point three million from the solid waste fund and three point seven for the wastewater fund, representing a nine percent increase over the proposed budget fiscal year two thousand and twenty five, twenty six that we just presented. The increase is mainly driven by the assumptions of a five percent COLA. A five percent COLA adjustment, certificate pay, annual merit of five percent for employees who have not yet reached their maximum salary range. Also include are the two new position and a promotion that we just discussed earlier. Cafeteria plan increase, service loyalty pay. As mentioned, there'll be one person for that in fiscal year twenty six, twenty seven. Okay, any questions on? Okay, any questions on salaries and benefits for fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven?
That five percent be looked at closer when we get to that point?
You're talking about the COLA? That, yes, this is just for budgeting purposes, yes.
Most are, I guess, maybe we use five percent, a couple of others I'm involved in. Five percent seems to be kind of the.
It's appropriately projected.
Yes.
Appropriately conservative.
That's four times.
Okay, next we'll look at fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven, operations and maintenance. The proposed preliminary O and M budget for fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven total approximately eleven point four million excluding transfer out programs and capital improvement projects. This includes approximately eight point, eight point one million for solid waste fund and three point three million for the wastewater fund. This reflects a two percent increase from the proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six budget, mainly due to inflation, higher living cost, and a few new expanded projects such as the budget book automation in the professional services line item here. Currently, the district budget process is manual and time-consuming, relying heavily on Excel, Word, and PDF formatting. To improve efficiency, staff is recommending the implementation of a cloud-based budget book automation system. This tool will streamline data entry, reduce errors, and allow integration of narrative, charge, and financial data. The total implementation cost is thirty-three thousand. That include sixteen thousand for the initial setup in the first year that you see here under professional services line item, sixteen thousand, and then an additional seventeen thousand for the annual software license. That's budgeted under this account here. By approving this budget line item in fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, the district will be better prepared for the next budget cycles. Now, the district engineer, senior management analyst, are here to answer any questions on other line items here or if staff want to add any information on these line item.
What are the parking lot enhancements?
As you recall and as you are aware, we re-landscaped the east, north, and south side of the building. This item is to now do, we've sort of affectionately referred to it as phase-two landscaping, which is mostly a paving project. Our current parking lot does not meet the current ADA requirements. There isn't enough parking, and so we're looking to up, update the parking, update the lighting, and then a little bit of landscaping, we would tie into the existing landscaping, incorporate that into the current controllers and all of that. So that project is basically to do that next phase affectionately, as it's known, out here in the parking area.
You say we don't imply we don't have the spots?
Yeah, we don't have, well, two things. The parking ordinance or the, when you look at the size of this building and the number of spots presumably, we're probably shy a couple spots or so. And then the ADA requirements, for example, our ramp dumps you out in the roadway, and that's no longer allowed. You have to have a different type of way to get to your vehicle. All workable, all doable, and if we're going to be making modifications and repaving and repairing, restoring the paving that the trees that shouldn't have been there, the type of tree it was, very roots and the roots have actually damaged the pavement. If you go out there, you'll see they're all raised and bumpy and the pavement integrity is starting to decay now. So that's what this project is, is to work on that part of the parking lot.
If we have picks on the parking, is just for compact. City did that on some areas.
Yeah, we can, there's tricks and methods, and there's things we can do, like, for example, we have a employee lunch area. I'm looking to move that in the corner and maybe turning that into a couple of spots. So there's things we can do to make room, and that would give the employees, I'll say, more privacy from public perception and then give us a couple of spots that we might need.
Okay, and I just want to point out that the wastewater rate study is in this, is budgeted in this fiscal year here.
On that one, we're probably going to, on the wastewater rate study, I'll just point out that we're probably going to look at two scenarios with and without the Eldon three forty-one Eldon redundant force main project. So we'll take, we'll take a look and hopefully by then we'll, we'll know better whether we're getting grant money or not.
Okay, moving on, the senior management analyst will present detail of CRNR cost projection for fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Yes, so for twenty-six, twenty-seven, we are assuming a five percent CPI request from CRNR. So they can make that request each year, and it's based on actual CPI, but it is capped at five percent annually. So to make the best estimate for budget projections, we're looking at that five percent. And then for occupancy, we assumed a similar increase to the previous year, one hundred accounts. And again, that's based on data from the past few years, looking at trends on how occupancy has been increasing. For recycling and landfill, there is limited data available, obviously, because we just started collecting those two waste streams. But we are hoping that participation will increase, that sorting will increase. And so this projection is, projection is based on a five percent increase in recycling tonnage and a five percent decrease in landfill tonnage. And then for organics, we are looking at a projected two percent increase from fiscal years, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six from that projection, and that's again based on trends over the past few fiscal years.
Hasn't the organics historically been going down?
It's really fluctuated. It'll go up for two years, and then it'll kind of go down for two years, and then it'll come back up. So it's really hard to get an accurate, yeah, projection of how it's going to move.
That would be somewhat tied to. Organics is, is we're in a dry cycle. People have less to throw away.
And also the lawn changes and whatnot?
Yeah, I don't think the food or the, you know, that part of the organics probably doesn't change that much.
Too much, right, yeah.
Almond tree.
Okay, moving, moving, we'll discuss about programs, and I have Marissa to go over programs as well.
So for programs, you'll notice that there are three items listed. The only program that actually will be in the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven budget is the battery recycling program, and staff is anticipating that costs will not exceed thirty thousand for both years. For composting and SB thirteen eighty-three, those are not appearing in the twenty-five, twenty-six budget because those are grant-funded. And so the grant funds will be carried over with the, the transfer for all of the grant funding. So there's no specific line item for those in the budget. And then because the SB thirteen eighty-three grant ends in, April first is the expenditure term, that's when it ends of twenty-twenty-six, and there's no projection for any other SB thirteen eighty-three grants at this time, those two items will not appear in the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget because they are fully grant-funded. Are there any questions on the program?
What did we spend this year for the battery recycling program?
We're right around twenty-five thousand.
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand, yeah, should be sufficient for the program, and that's even accounting for some increased participation.
Thank you, Marissa. Okay, moving along. The district engineer will present the next two fiscal years' capital improvement projects.
Thank you for letting me share what we're looking to do over the next two years as far as capital improvements and work out on our system. The first project, city manhole adjustments, as you're aware, has to do with when the city does a paving project in a roadway, they will need to lower our manhole frames and covers so they can grind the pavement. Then they will then add their overlay over the top, and then they have a contractor or subcontractor come back and then raise our manholes to grade. In order to prevent finger pointing or us to take the liability of pavement failures, we work with the city to have their contractor relocate our facilities, basically our manhole frame and cover. And so that program is to pay for, whether it's City of Costa Mesa, Newport Beach, or County Incorporated area down towards Irvine and Mesa Drive, that's what that pays for. The Mendoza force main rehab is a project that we're actively looking to add a second force main at our Mendoza pump station and an overflow in order to significantly reduce the potential for a sewer spill at that facility. And that's, that project is, is working on, on that improvement to our force main. So it basically adds a second discharge point to a gravity sewer, which is, I'll say, reduces our liability there. We're doing a similar project. We originally talked to the board about funding a generator project at Harbor. Or we looked at solar panels, we looked at various things, but all are very expensive, plus we don't have land there. So in order to install something like that, we would have to somehow either acquire land, buy land, use eminent domain, all of which are very unattractive and very expensive options. And so the, our district consultant, RBH, and I were looking at Harbor installing an overflow from the, from the wet well and get it to a gravity sewer that goes in a different direction. While we might not be able to trans, convey the solids, we can deal with that after we restore the pump station. The overflow would go out to a gravity sewer that goes, I'll say, easterly towards State Route fifty-five. And so that would significantly increase the response time and, and time that we need to restore a pump station should there be a major issue associated with that station. Manhole cover replacement six oh five, that project is basically our project to replace frames and covers that have failed. Refurbishment, manhole refurbishment six ten, we have several brick manholes. I think somewhere in the neighborhood of four to five thousand of them in our system. We also have some concrete manholes, for example, the, the discharge manhole near the fairgrounds from our Eldon pump station. That manhole is severely corroded, that concrete is severely corroded because we never, when we installed it, we never put a liner in there. And so that, for example, would be a candidate for replacement. So the money, that hundred thousand dollars, is used to basically go and rehabilitate or rehab the worst of our, of manholes over the next two-year period. Grade four sewer rehab and repairs, the three hundred and eighty thousand dollars will be used basically to, when, when we identify through CCTV or other assessment methods, if we have to do a dig and replace, lining pipes, repair offset joints, we get those through CCTV. The wastewater manager staff or the wastewater staff report things to the engineering department, and then we affect projects to repair those prior to them causing us sanitary sewer or sewer spills. Seabuff pump station, that station is, is one of our older station. It hasn't been refurbished. It's the original station that was designed, built, and turned over to the district by the developer. That station does not meet any of the district standards, and we're to the point where we're going to have to start replacing breakers and other things because of the station. So we're going to start out with replacing the electrical components, and then in a future year, two, three, three years, four years down the line, we'll do a mechanical rehab. And after the two rehabs, at least the pump station will be in, in better, more reliable shape. Sewer condition assessment, six three zero. You've heard that we're in the, we're ready to start in the next couple of years, the re-CCTV work. I've seen estimates as much as a million dollars to do the work. I think it'll be slightly higher than that, depending on certain things. And then staff availability to clean sewers for the CCTV camera crew. I think they go hand in glove, and our agency is, is demonstrated that we could work very closely with the CCTV contractor to, to clean the sewers ahead of them. So I'm looking to do a multi-year program to where we CCTV all two hundred and some odd miles of our, of our sewer system and use that data to develop information that develops a master plan and other information that we need going forward. Alamoore force main replacement, I've deferred that a year because we've got to work through some issues with the city regarding easements and with the property owners. And that project is basically to replace the single asbestos cement force main with a dual PVC force main system. The manhole cover replacement seven oh five is the second year of our two-year program to replace manhole frames and covers. Grade four sewer rehabs is a second year of the previous item that I mentioned to you. And then we have a odor control project in fan addition at Irvine pump station. That pump station is experiencing severe corrosion. When you go down and look at it, anything associated with venting because of the hydrogen sulfide in the station and the age of the sewage, all of the iron ductile and metal parts are all corroding at that pump station. In addition, it's pretty odorous when you're sent down by the bus stop. So that's our next odor project that we're looking to do two things with. Minimize odors coming from the station and create a, a method of removing the odorous compounds so that we minimize corrosion in our pump station. And then the last project is, staff has reported that wherever we have added Godwin engine-driven pumps in order to convey sewage on an emergency basis, because those wet wells were never designed for three intakes, we're having issues. And what happens is there's, there's about three or four stations where the sewer pipe comes in very high in the wet well, and the sewer sewage drops down, and it does several things, including it just messes up the wet well, the pumps, the electrical cabling. It creates odor, the grease separates out. And so what we want to do by adding drops in our various pump station is to eliminate the turbulence, channel the wastewater down to the, below the water level, and reduce the odor generation at those stations. The total for next, proposed total for next fiscal year would be one, one point five million dollars, plus or minus, and the year after that would be one point three four million dollars, plus or minus. That concludes my report on capital improvement.
Ironically, remember a couple of years ago, that project that OC Sand wanted to do with the, everything being gravity flow? We're going to eliminate, wasn't Alamoore one of the ones that was going to be eliminated?
Yes, yes. We had several pump stations, and now we're having to do projects to rejuvenate all of those.
Well, we, I remember talking about that alternative.
Former general manager recommended to me to do that project. The current general manager vetoed it.
It's got to be.
Orange County Sand District.
Yeah, they stopped at Orange County Sand.
Thanks, Mark.
Good job.
Okay, now we're at the last section of Attachment A and B. We'll talk about transfers between funds. Since, so let's start with the first line here. Fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, transfers in from solid waste fund to the wastewater fund. Okay, so since the district headquarters is owned by the wastewater fund, but used by both solid waste and wastewater fund. but used by both solid waste and wastewater fund, an annual office space rental fee of fifty-two thousand eight hundred will be transferred, like I said, from solid waste fund. So you see the negative from here, solid waste fund, to the wastewater fund, the same exact amount here. And then for general fund property tax, as you remember earlier at the beginning of this presentation, I went over property tax revenue budgets for the next two fiscal years. Now, we'll talk about how these revenues will be used. Which, the property tax revenue budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, like I, you, you saw earlier under revenue, the protection is three hundred ninety-two thousand three hundred in the general fund. Now, we're taking out from the general fund and transfer a hundred percent to the wastewater fund. I'm sorry, solid waste. Okay, and as for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven, Attachment B, the last section, under transfer from general fund property, as earlier, under revenue, we projected four hundred thousand. Staff is proposing to transfer three hundred thousand to solid waste and one hundred thousand to the wastewater fund. If actual property tax revenues exceed the, what was budgeted, the three hundred ninety-two, three hundred and the four hundred thousand, any surplus will remain in the general fund and staff later will recommend how to allocate those fund, whether to transfer it to solid waste or wastewater, depending on the priority at that time. And then next, transfer in from facilities revolving fund. These are fixture fees. That's where we record the fixture fees. Fixter fees are included in the fee study that was presented to the board last month. Over the years, this fund has supported several projects such as the purchase of the headquarters, installation of the solar panels here, HQ, and the drought tolerance landscaping. Now, staff is recommending two transfers from the facilities revolving fund. One is in fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, of ninety thousand dollars, transfer from this facility revolving fund to the wastewater fund to support for the landscaping drought that Mark was talking about earlier. And in the second year, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the first year, twenty-five, twenty-six, is for the installation, installing cameras, security cameras for HQ and District Yar. And the second transfer of a hundred thousand, that's for the landscaping. And then the last two lines here, asset management fund. Transfer between asset management fund and the wastewater fund. The district asset management fund is a reserve used to fund capital improvement projects and any emergency repairs. The district traditionally uses a pay-as-you-go approach to fund capital improvement projects. Therefore, the annual transfer from the asset management fund to the wastewater fund, support, the capital improvement projects are aligned with the CIP budget. As Mark mentioned earlier, the first year, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, was one million five hundred and eleven thousand for capital improvement projects. So we transfer from the asset management fund to the wastewater fund the exact amount. And that same goes for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven. So, transfer out from wastewater fund back to the asset management fund. So, trans, the, I'm sorry. The district has a policy that requires a minimum of five million in the asset management fund. So for the next two fiscal years, staff is proposing to transfer each year's CIP budget amount to the fund plus an additional eighty thousand dollars in fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six and an additional fifty thousand in twenty-six, twenty-seven. So you take the CIP budget plus eighty thousand. So you transfer using fund from the wastewater, transfer out, that's why you see the negative here, transfer out to the asset management fund. So we can maintain that five, a minimum of five million in the asset management fund. And also, we're preparing for the Eldon redundancy project. These transfer will help increase the asset management fund, as my, as I mentioned, to ensure that the five million dollar limit is in the asset management fund. Any questions on transfer?
Third, third one down, transfer, transfer in from general fund, the property tax increment that we get. We're putting a lot of money into the solid waste fund. Is that for rate, for rates or why? I mean, that's just to help with the rates. We talked about that several years ago and that, that's why we take that money and put it in the solid waste.
I think it's rate, they, they call it rate stability.
Ray, I think we called it rate stabilization or something or other, yeah. Okay, why would we put money into the solid waste fund when we don't have any real expenses other than paying the aller, right? So this is to help with that rate?
Yes.
An adjunct to that is we could, we could decide to change that whenever, if, if something came up where we didn't want to stabilize rates, we could move that to the wastewater fund, couldn't we?
Right, so that's where, on the second year budget, I'm proposing to split this four hundred thousand to also support the wastewater fund because or else we're not going to have a balanced budget. So staff is requesting that the Board of Directors review, discuss the proposed preliminary biannual budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-six, twenty-seven and provide comments, feedback, direction at today's meeting. Based on the board recommendations, staff will revise and bring the budget back for further discussion in the May study session. We also plan to present the preliminary budget to the CAC at the May meeting. If needed, we'll return to the board for additional discussion at both the May meeting and June study session. Finally, the two-year budget is scheduled to be presented for adoption on June twenty-three, two thousand twenty-five. Any questions?
The June third date, that's the last possible date for the Notice of Public Hearing?
It's just the mailing of.
I know, that's the postcard mail. Is that the last date that we could get that? Can we do it earlier than that or not?
We can do it earlier, yes.
That's the last date, okay.
On the previous slide, the asset management fund, when, when we did the asset management study, I think the consultant, Bronn Caldwell, recommended that we annually spend about one point seven million dollars. Why are we spending less in the next two years?
Well, part of that is because we had some unforeseen expenditures, like South Coast Plaza repairs. We had a siphon on, on Pollo Reno that took a hit on our, on our expenses.
Yeah, for both of those projects, Vice President Newton is, we had to dip into those reserve funds or that fund to pay for that emergency work.
Well, the asset management, Bronn Caldwell recommended that we at least spend one point seven million just to keep up with the assets deteriorating.
That, that is, that is a true statement. And in fact, I will tell you that that is based on the value of the system back when that study was done. In the meantime, the value of our system has increased. And so we probably at this point in time should be spending a little more. But that being said, we do have to look at funds available to do the work.
Well, we, we, so we, it would be appropriate to increase the fees that we charge in order to pay for the minimum, one point seven was ten years ago.
True.
And now it's even less.
Well, we're, we're in the process. One of the items that's budgeted is to do a new rate stu, wastewater rate study that also looks at Eldon Force Main, and we'll be looking at all that as part of that. Bringing that back to you.
That's the end of my presentation today.
Right. Any other, any other questions for Caitlin or Lou or Steph? One of the things I really like about your budget presentations, I think I've told you this before. I'm not a budget guy. I'm, you know, Bob has more experience. I want the budget clear. I want it, you know, concise. I want it saving well, that stuff. But you do a wonderful job of explaining to us what, what needs, and all of you do. I mean, the one thing I really appreciate, sorry for pontificating, I think it's appropriate. We ask you questions during these things, and I don't know how many times I've been on boards and stepped in the staff where people look at you go, oh, I don't know, we'll have to get back to you on that. You know how many times you did that today? None. When you're ready, all of you, when you're ready to answer our questions, that means a lot to, to all of us, I think. And so good presentation. I know we have some things to work out. Some of us have our own biases on things, so I look forward to the next meeting. I think we can do whatever you need.
Is there any comments, feedback that you, anything you want me to look at or bring back with more information on?
Maybe the only thing would be the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget, like Bob's talking about, bringing up our total.
The asset management.
Asset management.
I said, that's probably, and I honestly think that's probably a separate discussion away from the bud, the budget cycle. I think it's something that, that's a philosophical thing that we have to look at. And I don't know if I want to tie it to the budget. I'd rather.
I'm saying in the future, we need to, you know, next, you know.
Yeah.
Because we can increase it. We have to based on the costs.
I think Mark makes a good point. We talks about pump station that's corroded. I mean, it probably ain't the only one, so to speak, you know?
Especially Alamoor.
You know, I thought this was really good. It was just like one left and the other, you know, it wasn't like, okay, call on you now, call on you now. You know, I've been to so many budget meetings and let me tell you, this was.
Not a budget guy.
This was really good. It, it was an answer to, you know, all of the items that you waited, you took it on, and was very appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you for the positive feedback. Like I said, we've been working on this since January. And the last two months, I mean, day and night, I've been living with these numbers, so.
You have nothing to be embarrassed about like that. John, you passed the test. You did fine. You didn't need to be nervous. Just. Everybody, I, I mean, that's the one thing that's really appreciated to you guys.
He can read what Caitlin wrote.
Is that what it was? She's good.
Yeah.
Yes, she is.
And I want to thank all, everyone here, staff, they've, I can't do this by myself, so. Thanks to Scott and everyone's support in this and the board as well.
Any other questions or comments from anybody? Staff, everybody good? Happy Jackie Robinson Day to everybody.
So today?
That's something.
It was also the day Abraham Lincoln died too.
That right?
Yes, he was, yes.
And Lincoln died in April.
He got sassy, he got shot April fourteenth, he died April fifteenth.
Yeah, that's why, that's why yesterday was my wedding anniversary. April four taxes, the day Abraham Lincoln got shot.
Yep, yep.
And it also was a good time to take time off of my new job.
With that, at home?
No.
What's that? What new job?
Well, I worked for State Farm. I started on March fifth and I asked for four days off for a honeymoon. And my new bosses, are you sure you?